I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are going to slip Barry the normal procedures slightly this evening. We have one member, Mr. Brady, is getting medical care in Virginia. So we are going to cover certain items on the phone with Mr. Brady voting by telephone, and then we will proceed with normal conduct of meeting. We're going to defer to public comments until after he gets those questions to the agenda covered with Mr. Brady. The reason for this is that we have had, we will have one less than a full board with us this evening in addition to Mr. Brady.
Hi Jim Staub, I'm going to put man's speaker on, okay? Jim?
Hello?
Very good Jim, you can hear us?
I am here, Mr. Brady in presence.
Okay, we're, uh, I'm under business functions. If Mr. Staub will bring up item H, which is unmarked but it's the one of E or F G. This is an item which we did not discuss fully in the workshop, and I'd like to end the vote.
Okay, who wants to say that, can you get one for the area?
It's allowed in, all right.
Right about that? Okay.
All right, right.
I move the Board of School Directors of Exeter Township School District authorize the retraining of Bronadel Williams Esquire and Fox Rothschild as Special Construction Council at the hour of the rate of $325 per hour regarding completion of the Watten Creek site work, which is an attachment 5G2.
I have a motion and second, Jim, did you hear that motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Any discussion?
I just have a great concern about this in that we are, it's been going on about three years and now, I guess, trying to get this resolved, about bond issue. And I know Mr. Malz has said he would do something, and he tried, I guess he did a few things, and he said he can't handle it. And now we're going to pay someone $300 an hour, and we do not know what the end result would be as far as an amount. So I have, I'm pretty shocked about this motion.
Any further comments?
Yeah, I would just like to say that I really agree with Mr. Malz's representation. I think Ms. Pisha made the point that it's gone on long enough. I believe we need to bring the right people in, bring this to full closure. And I, I don't believe that this is going to take a lot of time, I can't argue these people. And I really believe that we need to do this.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I also agree that Mr. Malz has done what he could in an attempt to get things resolved. And at this point in time, in his best judgment, which I do think is very good, he has recommended that we take this course of action. And for us, as a district, it's the right action to take.
Were there comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Next, what I would like to consider under personnel appointments from the administrative and certificated staff. Mr. Bender, please. Severine, G, or J.
I move the Board of School Directors approve the following appointments listed on number one, administrative staff. Number two, certificated staff, A through I.
Second. I have a motion and a second, discussion.
Yes, I have a question concerning B. It says that the person is going to be coming here on September 16th. Is her, and since, isn't most, we start on July 1st, so is her salary going to be paraded? Yes, all right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the administrative and certificated staff appointments, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, that was an aye, Jim, right?
That was.
Okay.
I move the, I move the Board of School Directors approve the appointment of Aaron L. Staub as full-time senior high school gifted teacher.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, discussion. How do we proceed with the vote? Thank you, sir.
I have a question concerning step two. Now, from what I understand, Ms. Staub was, worked here last year. Now, we are on freeze, so why is she getting to step two rather than step one?
I'm going to let Betty explain that to you, she went over this with our attorney. And John, maybe you can help me, I discussed this with Ellis Katz, and he related it to the Penn matter and the Mifflinburg decision. When a person has been a long-term substitute in your district, you must give them credit for that experience. We discussed the status quo situation, he says this is different than status quo. We've done it with other substitutes in a similar manner. So our contract actually demands that we give substitutes credit for their experience with us. Our labor attorney, Mr. Katz, has said, relative to the, I think he said Penn matter.
Those cases of cases that do say long-term substitutes do go on to the next step. But I, but I would defer to him as to the status quo issue.
Yes, yes.
Because status quo is a very different issue.
That's why I called him, because I was betwixt in between, between the Mifflinburg, Penn matter court case and do we violate status quo. And in the past, I've also checked this with TSA, and they also cited those court cases as superseding the status quo issue.
And we had that with one or two other former long-term subs this year who were in that same situation. And we weren't sure if they did go to step two or stayed in step one, and this was the result for all of those employees.
When, when the long-term sub is coming into a permanent position, long-term sub going into another long-term sub, you're absolutely right, Pat, we would not move them during status quo. That's why you'll see people who still don't know the step.
Is there any further discussion?
No, I just, I think one of the things we need to consider is the fact that this is probably the best way you can hire someone. Because it gives you the opportunity to see them work within the district for a fairly substantial amount of time. And I would just beg to question is, what kind of, what kind of employee would give you the time, be successful, and then not be giving, not be given credit for the time that they gave you? I don't think that's, I don't think that's the way you build relationships with employees. I think we need to treat people fairly, and I think this is really a fair way of doing it. I think it's a win-win.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of appointing Aaron Staub, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Was that in opposition, Jim, or is that?
It was an aye.
No, that was, that was a yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we've got all in favor, any opposed? The motion carries. One, and one on extension, I'm sorry. Jim, I think it's what we needed you for, I wish you luck with the appointment.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thanks Jim, see you soon. Just wanted to mention the days of Jason Dean is in the audience both as well as in this new system of school and high school.
Jason, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You've seen me before as a substitute, now I'm going to be also.
Thanks for having me.
Are there any public comments for this evening? Hearing none. I've seen no indications, we have a set of minutes to be approved this evening. I'll entertain a motion to accept it.
So moved, Dee Singer.
Second.
A motion and second, discussion on the minutes. Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Staub, business functions.
I move that the Exeter Township School, I move that the Exeter Township School District hereby resolves the assessment deal with Goodwill Easton area parcel number 81-5326-05-28-0308, filed through number 12-25562, Parks County Court of Common Pleas in accordance with the attached payment in lieu of taxes, pilot agreement, and resolve further authorize its superintendent and solicitor to execute the afforded pilot agreement and take any action necessary to complete resolution of the with that appeal. It's an attachment 5A.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, discussion.
I just want to say thank you, I think it's a good, it's a good plan, it's, Goodwill Industries down, down 562. There's a portion of that that was for rent that they were looking to revert back to nonprofit, which means we would have lost all taxable income. By agreeing to this, we, we gave a little bit back, but what we've done is we have, we have a 10-year guarantee of taxable income where next year if they did take the first sale for the rent off of that, we would have received no rental income. So what we wanted to do was preserve as much as we could for the district.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I think that, again, this was a good business decision for us, as Joe said. We would, more than likely wind up losing that taxable base there. And now we'll have something guaranteed for the next 10 years, so it's a good idea.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion as presented, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of School Directors approve service contracts with Simplex Brunel for the district's fire alarm, time, sound, and communication services in seven buildings at a total cost of $58,106. The service contracts include system testing and inspection, and emergency service parts and labor. The contract amount is 1.7% higher than the prior year.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the Simplex contract, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of School Directors approve the following signers on general fund, food service fund, athletic fund, and student activity fund accounts with National Penn Bank. Dr. Beverly Martin, Superintendent, and Ann Gaudisch, Business Manager. The accounts are being opened due to the closing of local PNC bank branches. It will be used for cash deposits, cash balances will subsequently be transferred to the PISLAP accounts. There will be no fees associated with these accounts.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of School Directors approve disposal of obsolete technology equipment in the amount of $306,159.20. Capital asset items are fully depreciated. Items will be disposed of through the services of Sycamore International, which is a technology asset purchasing and recycling firm, that's an attachment 5D.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, discussion.
If I could offer a friendly amendment that in front of the word amount, the original amount of 306,000?
Yeah.
Is at this point, if they're fully appreciated out with any, rather than giving the impression that.
It's really the new computers.
Would, would you approve of doing away with the, in the amount?
In the original, in the original amount.
Yes. You agree with it? Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of School Directors approve the disposal of the 1999 Chevy dump truck through a sale to Exeter Township. The sale price is $7,900, which is based on Blue Book and NDA used vehicle values. The dump truck will be sold in as this condition.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of disposing of the dump truck, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of School Directors authorize district administration to execute the required agreements to transition the 403D, 457D plan administration services provided by Employer Admin Services, Inc. to TSA Consulting Group, Inc. The services provided by TSA Consulting Group will be at no charge to Exeter Township School District. TSA Consulting Group will assess the investment providers' $2 per month participant for administrative services. The transition to TSA Consulting, Inc. is at the recommendation of K.B. Porgolos, retired planning consultant, in order to provide better service to the school district. The change will be effective October 1st, 2013.
Second.
I have a second, I have a motion and a second, discussion.
Deb, do we run this by the Tissue Association?
Uh, yes.
I informed them of the change.
Wasn't sure if you had heard anything bad.
I didn't hear anything bad from, it's just a change in the administrator of the 403D plan. It's not impacting the employees in any way as far as fees, it's just the firm was changing.
They didn't want to pay, and we didn't want to pay.
Right. That's sort of.
We want better service.
Right. Any further discussion? All in favor of TSA Consulting Group, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of School Directors approve the attached resolution to sell to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania in lieu of condemnation for purposes of its road improvement, right-of-way parcels of .332 acres and .154 acres for a total of $26,745.50. That's, see attached resolution and agreed amount of sale.
Another second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of selling the gutters of protectionable schools, please indicate so by saying aye. Close? Motion carries.
That concludes business functions.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Ploner, I think you forgot the treasurer's report.
I was just about to go back to that, treasurer's report.
All right, um, I asked the Board of Directors to approve the treasurer's report, and you will find it in IBDK.
Second.
A motion and second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of approving the treasurer's report, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carries. Dr. Bender, personnel.
I move the Board of School Directors to send the following action listed on part A, number one, the appointment of Ashley Fogarty as junior high school eighth grade physical science teacher.
Second. A motion and second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carries.
I move the Board of School Directors to accept the following resignations listed on part B. Number one, certificated staff, number two, support staff, number three, extricular staff. And on the addendum, and amendment, administrative staff.
I have a second.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carries.
Uh, we move to the appointments. On the main agenda, we have, I move the appointment of support staff, number four. Number five, extricular staff. And then on the addendum, there, we have additional administrative staff and certificated staff.
Second.
Motion and second, and discussion on any appointments. Hearing none, all in favor of the appointment as printed, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carries.
I move the Board of School Directors to approve, ratify the following request for leave absence listed under part D. Number one, certificated staff, number two, support staff.
Second.
A motion and second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the printed leaves, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carries.
I move the Board of School Directors to approve or ratify the following requests for the change of staff status listed on the part E, number one, support staff, A through D.
Second.
A motion and second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the change of the status, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carries.
I move the Board of School Directors to approve the following staff conferences listed on part F, number 1 through 7.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the conferences as printed, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carries.
That completes personnel.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kutcher, student functions.
I move that the Board of School Directors approve the adoption of a settlement agreement to release in a sum not to exceed $96,500, which is representative of existing and future tuition fees effective the beginning of 2013-14 school year through the conclusion of the 2014-15 school year for student number 534021 in a form acceptable to the solicitor to provide for exceptional students' education, settle and compromise all claims raised by the student and parents, and authorize the Board President and Secretary to execute the settlement agreement and release on behalf of the district.
I have a second.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carries.
I, in B, I move that the Board of Directors approve the adoption of a settlement agreement and release in a sum not to exceed $144,139, which is representative of existing and future tuition fees effective the beginning of the 2013-14 school year through the conclusion of the 2014-15 school year for student number 140290 in a form acceptable to the solicitor to provide for exceptional students' education, settle and compromise all claims raised by the student and parents, and authorize the Board President and Secretary to execute the settlement agreement and release on behalf of the district.
Second.
A motion and a second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carries. Curriculum programs, Mr. Dee Singer.
No report.
Committee?
Our next meeting will be September the 4th at 6:30 here.
Thank you, sir, acknowledging Mr. Decker.
Uh, no report for this afternoon for September, early October.
Thank you, sir. ECIU, we find all the alternate students, and that didn't accomplish much. All the alternate teachers, I'm sorry. They were being tardy enough. Athletic committee, Mr. Staub.
Riley. As we come into a new sports year, this is going to be a little sad and different for us this year. For those who I'm sure are here know that our athletic director, Secretary Pony Crowell, passed away after a sudden brief illness. I know just as my kids came up through the ranks, I don't think there was a single football game I wasn't arraigned to get into the right line at the game. But no, she, I, of all the people that I've been around and being involved with the athletic program, nobody bled blue and white like Pony. But she's going to be sorely missed. She was the heart and soul of the athletic department. And again, I want to extend my sympathies and condolences to her family and friends, and we are missing them. And that's the extent of it.
Thank you, sir. Township leaders, huh?
Russ and I have, are a part of the Strategic Planning Committee at the township. We have selected, no, we have interviewed six different corporations who would put together a plan for the township. We're down to two, and they will be interviewed sometime next month. If you all remember, this was mentioned by Mr. Wilson when he paid a visit to us, I believe it was back in January. So that is proceeding forward with the idea of a tactical plan for the, I'm sorry, a strategic plan for the township. Big difference between tactical and strategic.
Public relations, Mr. Cream.
Thank you, the activity calendars are here, you can seek your copies this evening. Again, as we did last year, last year was the first time, the calendars will be going home with students on the first day of school to the youngest child in each family. They are labeled so that they go home with the right child. We are making them available, there are ample copies, we will make available to the public anytime on or after the first day of school. And this year, with printing less calendars, obviously, than when we mailed them to everyone in the township. And with the ads, we were able to get, the calendar basically cost $1,875. Last year, by not mailing them out and printing less, we saved about $3,400. This year, it's more like $3,600. So that's the status of the calendar, again, if anybody wants one, they are available, we have an ample supply. And every school has an ample supply, we'll be glad to give them to anyone starting on Monday. And if you remember back in May, we asked you to approve the new all-hazard plan, which you did, thank you. There was then a fairly involved memo of understanding that needed to be approved by both the district and the police department, after John looked at it, after the township solicitor looked at it. It finally was signed and in place, which it needed to be, so that's in place. And as you know, in the past years, for our emergency plan, we always had a first-step flip chart that told all staff members what to do when an incident happened. Because the all-hazard plan was different, the flip chart needed to be different. Those arrived today, and all staff members will be getting them tomorrow or Thursday. So everything is in place for the new all-hazard plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question.
Thank you, sir.
On the calendar, did the difference in distribution affect the interest in advertising in the, in what we receive in terms of?
No, same, same last year, and actually this year, there were a few more folks interested in advertising. So it pretty much did not affect it negatively at all. Thanks.
I want to thank you for all of the effort you put into that hazard plan. That was a major undertaking, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Cream. ECTC?
Uh, no report. Things are smooth at ECTC, no time to get a messed up special education funding formula, I don't know.
How about the billing? Can we get that?
Actually, I'll tell you what, we could, we have received a little pink.
Pretty good.
Kind of red ones.
With Mr. Brady's absence, does anyone have anything for the facilities committee?
We have a met.
Yeah, there is a meeting, I haven't gotten my attention on this. All in committee? Paying on requests?
We, we have a payment request from, from the general fund of $1,372,185.60 for the capital account for $59,410.04 and for a Watten Creek construction project for $310.50. We have a payment request from the general fund of one million three-hundred-seventy-two-thousand-one-hundred-eighty-five dollars and fifty cents from the capital account for fifty-nine-thousand-four-hundred-ten dollars and four cents, and for a Watton Creek construction project for three-hundred-ten dollars and fifty cents. And you can find that in attachment XVIII.
Do I have a second in approving those requests?
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Well, the exciting news around here is that we're welcoming back our teachers tomorrow and our students on Monday. So we're getting all geared up for that. And our buildings look beautiful, and everybody's ready to go. I'm especially excited about all the great new teachers, administrators, and support staff that we hired over the summer. Like Jim Collins said, if you want a good organization to become great, you have to get the right people on the bus. And that's our goal always. And I think this summer, we've really accomplished that. I think we always accomplish that. But this summer, I'm especially excited about some of our new hires and in talking to them. I'm excited about their philosophies and the direction that they like to go in with their career and hearing how much of a good fit that's going to be with Exeter. So we're really excited to get the year rolling, and I'm sure it'll be a busy one. Oh, and Pennsylvania was accepted by the federal government as the waiver was accepted for no child left behind, meaning that AYP will not be determined the way it had been in the past, but it will be determined by our school report card, which comes out in October. None of us have seen that yet. So stay tuned.
Do we have an updated kindergarten enrollment?
The kindergarten enrollment, as I looked at it last, was at one-hundred-four at a Watton Creek, eighty-seven, I believe, at Lorraine, and fifty-two at Jacksonwald. So we add that up quickly. It's low. We're low this year. Lorraine's pretty stable. Awatton is down by roughly about fifteen kids, and Jacksonwald is down.
Mr. Pitts.
Billy Brown. Good evening. I just want to highlight some things in the report. I won't get through all the details. One correction from the time of printing of serial staff, we were expecting to be full up going into the school year. One of our candidates backed out, but we do have a good pool. So you'll see another name next board meeting that hopefully will be getting up to speed within the first couple weeks of the school year. Under the ground staff, I commented on the fields. The fields this year look fantastic. As you probably already know from your houses, you still have to mow twice a week. That's bad for mowing and wear and tear on the tractors, but it's great for the kids because they're starting the fields with ice cream fields and not brown fields that they're going to kill. That's going to lead to a bad next year. So this summer will actually help out not just the fall, but also the spring sports as well. The other note I have in there is in terms of the turf field, and I assume Mr. Gaff shared with you, we had about a hundred tears that hadn't been repaired on the field. We've been kind of projecting that next summer we'll be having time to replace the turf field. And I basically want to recommend that we keep that in the plan because you'll start getting some safety issues if the tears get worse and worse. Some of them are minor, some of them are more significant. But with the sun beating on it for ten years and the wear and tear that we put on that field, it's going to be hard to replace it. Other thing in terms of major systems, one of the two compressors on the chiller that handles the new section of the high school has been problematic all spring and all summer. Did not budget to have that replaced. In this year's budget, we're going to try and nurse it through and make it a planned replacement for next year. But if it completely fails, we'll have to get that sooner. Junior high lighting project, I think last year we reported that we should be done by this summer. By when we start tearing the lights apart, we found out that every single one had twice as many ballasts as we thought they would. Most of them are single-balance lights. So the project is going to take a little bit longer. I've added in the line on the school statuses for Martin Luther Lausch, Lorraine Elementary and Jacksonwald Elementary. The last, the last reference says on each one of those lines kind of highlights that those are our oldest buildings. Depending whether you talk to an architect or an engineer, buildings should be completely renovated every twenty to twenty-five years. Again, depending who you talk to. And these three buildings are pushing that type. What that means is maintenance costs will continue to rise. We'll still nurse things along. We've nursed this one along for forty-one years. We are replacing the water heater. We've already replaced the water heater that handled the kitchen several years ago. We have done the roof, but more and more things are starting to fail on this. And one of the major issues with this building in particular is that plumbing valves are not trustworthy. You turn them, you may not be turning off the water. But most of the time, we have plumbing repair on this building. We've been shutting the whole building down. We're going to do a project next week to try and get it so that we can isolate some certain areas, but it's just going to be a matter of the forty-one-year-old systems that are just going to start to fail. Others thing that I've added on this year, just some reference information. I know during the merger discussion, there was talk about shutting down buildings or closing buildings. And I just wanted to throw some numbers out there. For Lausch, Lorraine, and Jacksonwald, I put down the actual utility cost for school year twelve, thirteen. Those are if you completely wipe out those utilities. But when we had this building unoccupied, not mothballed, not sold, not shut down, we only saved about eighteen percent. So the eighteen percent figure in the right-hand column kind of gives you an estimate of if you mothball or make a building unoccupied, those are the numbers you can kind of look at. I know there was some discussion last time, and I think I threw out like thirty thousand. Obviously, it was a lot less than that in terms of. The last page I have is.
Mr. Pitts, question. The eighteen percent, is that applicable only to these buildings? Or would it be to any school building of comparable age? Or would you just have to look at the building and make an assessment?
I would say you can make a comparison with the other elementary buildings. With the secondary building, if you're going to make it unoccupied, you're really cutting down a lot of computer use, which will greatly reduce the cost. So with the secondary building, if you're going to make it unoccupied, that percentage probably will go up. And I don't have any concrete base to offer other than just handily, secondary schools use a lot more water and electricity than elementary schools. Last page, I just want to kind of toot the horn of my department a little bit. When we did the passable survey, we've done it every other year for at least all the time that I've been here. We've always made steady gains. But this last survey, which was for school year eleven, twelve, we broke the top ten percent in terms of performance in terms of cost and productivity. Basically, if you look at line two statewide, for every square foot, the average was four forty-nine. We were three fifty-one. So the way I explain it to my guys, where floor tile is twelve inches by twelve inches, that's a square foot. For every single floor tile in the district, our department saves a dollar compared to average in the state. And I think that's pretty impressive. If you look down to aisles nine and ten, state average, we ask our custodians to make, to take care of about twenty-eight-thousand square feet. And most of, well, the average in the state is twenty-two thousand square feet. So we ask a lot of these. Same thing with the maintenance, one-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand square feet versus one-hundred-and-twenty-two. So we run a very lean operation. That was recognized in the survey. Kudos to my guys for keeping things looking good and keeping the costs down. I did an article in the spring newsletter, and the calculation of what our savings would be over an average is nine-hundred-and-fourteen thousand. If we were average, if we were right in the middle of the pack for the school this year, you know, it's nine-hundred-thousand dollars more than we're covering out of costs that happens. And that's credit to my guys working hard and taking care of things and keeping costs low. Subject to your questions.
That's an amazing number.
I think you just gave us a clear idea that we should not prioritize our employees. Because if we can, you know, nine-hundred-and-fourteen thousand dollars, that's almost a million dollars. And it's hard to come by a million dollars these days from local taxpayers or even from the state, I should say, or the federal government. So I think that's a great testament when they talk about public employees. They do do a great job. And there's no profit more to them. So thanks a lot. And thank you also, Mr. Prince, for showing up at the PUCB for water. I appreciate the district's involvement.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Prince. One last item of business for the board. We are in the receipt of a letter of resignation from Kathleen Musker. The law requires us to entertain this. We should, I had to move on tonight or schedule sometime when we would move on. Now, that gives us a theory on our mind. If we delay moving on this, it will create a situation where the board would select a new candidate for a two-year period. That is not my preferred method. I feel that if we act on this this evening, then the residents of Exeter Township will have an opportunity in November to vote for a new member of the board. We will have to, if we accept this this evening, we will have to appoint a new member of the board within the next thirty days. That member will serve until the first week of December when we have the reorganization meeting. I think there's two options. If you have any questions, Mr. Muller is certainly more expert at this than I am, but I'll entertain a discussion at this point.
What would the ballot and the member look like?
Well, we don't know what it would look like, but if an appointment's made within sixty days of the municipal election, fall election, is valid for that term and two years. But if it's more than sixty days before the resignation, so if it would be accepted, say, tonight, it would be more than sixty days before the municipal election, then whoever's going to be on the ballot will be picked by the respective committees. The Democratic Committee can pick one, the Republican Committee can pick the other candidate. So you wouldn't have two candidates picked by political parties. In any event, we still have to, or we should appropriately fill the vacancy, whether we fill it for just two months or whether we fill it for a year and two, two years and two months. So we do have that on to an obligation to, at some point, appoint a candidate to finish out the term.
Are we compelled to?
Do we have a discussion? I think we should move to appoint someone immediately so that in November, the citizens can decide, not our appointee, our appointee, but who, is it the Democratic Party and the Republican Party gets one?
Ready.
I think that probably would be the best, you know, the best alternative.
Is that informing the motion?
I'm on that motion.
I have motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have the motion and the second. Discussion.
Excuse me. I'm not sure what the motion is.
What is the motion, simply to accept?
Wait, wait, that's right.
Accept the resignation.
Accept the resignation?
Yeah.
You said a point.
I'm sorry. I meant to accept the resignation so we can move to appoint someone. I'm sorry.
So you second.
Yes, I second. And for the discussion is concerned, I would just restate what Paul and Pam stated. I believe that that's the appropriate thing would be to have people on the ballot, to have the citizens of the township have the opportunity to elect the school director for this upcoming term.
Could you explain how we notify the two committee, county committees, parties about selecting a candidate to be placed on the ballot?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Wrong person. I'm sorry.
We, the district, this board will write a letter to the Board of Elections at the County Courthouse. The Board of Elections will then request from the two party, the Democrat and Republican Party Committees, a nominee to be put on the ballot. He must be fully qualified. And the normally, I know about the Republican Committee, they have individuals who represent the Republicans of Exeter Township will be the ones who meet with the president of that committee to determine what their nominee would be.
And the similar, we just, actually, the Democratic Committee, County Committee just did this last Saturday.
Maybe you have practice.
Yeah.
In the meantime, though, how do we handle the vacancy then?
We still have to advertise for a temporary replacement to take Kathleen's seat. And we must appoint them within thirty days. If we do not appoint them within thirty days, the citizens of the county can petition the.
The school district, citizens, ten volunteers from the school district can petition, of course, to have an appointment. I mean, this is, this is just a two-month stopgap. You know, it's really something that.
It's hard to find somebody.
Can you just, can you just appoint someone? Do you have to go through the interview process?
I wouldn't.
Mine would spend a lot of time.
I'm considering.
I'm just saying, because I'm wondering if it's someone who has been on the board, if it knows, did they do it for two months? I don't know.
We don't have to conduct any.
I don't know what the process is.
The board, by majority vote, can appoint anyone to sit in that seat for the next two months.
The only thing we have to do is the whole process has to be public. There can be no executive session. But other than that, we can do it however we want.
If we have interviewed, if we have advertised for interviews in the past, we should do it the same. We should give people, my personal opinion is, we should give people an opportunity. And who knows, we may find someone who is interested. They could then carry themselves through and get themselves on the ballot and try to continue it out for the.
Well, the nominees for the ballot have to be in by September fifth. So we will not even have an appointee by the time the nominations have been. So that, although the individual who serves in an interim capacity could possibly, could impress the citizens to such a point that they would want to write him in. But so far as getting a position on the ballot, that will not happen.
We could use some good press coverage.
Or they could go to their respective party.
They won't be, if we go thirty days.
I mean, at the time, at the time.
No. The parties have to put the nominations in by September fifth. We will not have had a person who will be temporary until after that time.
Oh, I see. But I mean, if we, if we would appoint someone soon, could they go then to the?
I don't see how we could make appointments if we're going to advertise.
Yeah, that's right. It's anyway.
So the Republican and Republican Committees will have the options. And I'm sure that they will accept any input from anyone who would like to give. Any other discussion?
Okay. Last clarification. I'm really having trouble with this. I don't know why tonight. So if someone is interested, who, when they read the paper tomorrow and they see there's a vacancy and they're interested in the position, who should they contact?
If they would like to serve for two months, they can contact us. If they would like to be on the ballot for the November election, they still have to go through the procedure of filling out the.
They still have to go through the county.
They've got to fill out some of the forms for, at least I know, the Republican Committee to consider, i.e. their financial reports and things like that. So their best option would be contacting the Republican or Democratic Committee.
So are you saying that you're not interested in having someone fill this position for two months?
I'm very interested.
Okay.
They should be encouraged to apply to both.
That's, that would be the ideal.
Right. That's the way.
So if they're interested, we hope they're for more than two months.
Right. Okay. Thank you. About it.
And if we see those applications by September tenth. And if we see those applications by September 10th, which is our workshop meeting?
September 30th is over. Well, we could do it on September 3rd. Well, who's going to have it? Do we have a voting?
We have...
Committee committee.
I know, it's a committee meeting, but we could have this a little bit if we have the time. If we get...
Well, that means that we would have to have the board meet in the interim to interview these applicants. If we wanted to have a voting meeting on the, it would only be the workshop.
Scratch that. I'm going to dig myself into a hole and you all think I don't understand it.
I think we could also see what type of response there is to the process and then we can make a determination as far as...
We need to set a deadline, though, should it?
Right.
You know, I mean, should it be September 3rd or, which is the first Tuesday?
I would say having all the requests, the applications, and by then would be wise. And then during that week between the workshop and the voting meeting, we will meet to consider those.
Yes. I'm trying to remember if we've ever done this before.
Yes.
I think we did it one time, but I can't remember the all moves.
Oh, you mean, you mean for such a short period of time.
We have to... It was, it was... We were banking.
I was appointed in June.
Now, that wasn't qualified?
No. I was appointed, then I had to get on the ballot and run for election because it came as a surprise to people on board. So, I had to go through that and get added to the...
Did you go to both committees?
Yes.
But actually, wouldn't the person serve till December?
Yes.
Wouldn't it be two months appointed?
Well, November, that's still too long.
Yes, two months, the first week of September.
Yeah.
So, do I have a motion laying out that we should solicit applications to be received by September 3rd with consideration of temporary positions?
I don't think we voted on that.
Oh, we didn't vote on that.
To accept the resignation.
Light my lights.
I would like to say that it's very sad that Kathy has chosen to resign at this point. I understand that she, she does have reasons for work. Some things have changed there. But she was a valuable member of this board. Brought us a lot of, a lot of stability. She was very professional. And I think that that's, that's a good thing to happen. We're going to miss that.
Well, I think you're absolutely correct. And Kathy's resignation was based upon her judgment that she could not apply the amount of time necessary to do this job appropriately. And that is about as professional as I can get. If you can't do the job, if you're... And it was not because of her competence, but rather because of her scheduling.
I think it's important to note here that the, I believe we're really fortunate as far as the stability of this board has been. According to the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, the average school board member in the state of Pennsylvania serves less than one term. Less than a term. So, most of them are resigned. So, there's a lot, there's a lot of movement out there, folks. And we have not experienced that on this board. And I think that it's, I think that it's a real benefit for this community and for the school district and for the students that we have the kind of stability and educational leadership on the board that we have had here, except for Dr. Bender. He's the new guy. You just guessed that effort out?
Yeah.
That's called busting the curve right there.
Any further discussion on Kathleen's resignation? Are you now all in favor of accepting the resignation? Please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Now, I would entertain a motion to advertise for applicants for a temporary seat on the board to have replies by three September.
Some... Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. Are you now all in favor? Please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. And will the district please put the word out?
We have it. And we have done...
Are there any further items to be discussed on the board?
I just want to say that I had read in the Pennsylvania School Boards Association latest issue that there has been a report done concerning charter schools. And they have found that the results are very mixed and that the traditional public schools outperform the charter schools. And in Pennsylvania, I was like a gas burner, but in Pennsylvania, they are, we are, they are third from the bottom of charter school performance in the nation. I don't know how many states have charter school laws, but we are third from the bottom. So, that does not bode very well for people that make the choice of, you know, so-called public charter schools, the thousand results that we get. And also, the new regs for the teacher evaluation that the state has passed, well, I don't know if anybody knows about this, but the charter schools, who are the third worst in the nation, are exempt. The teachers are exempt from the same regulations that our teachers are asked to meet. So, what does that tell you about the ability for them to do better?
Where did you hear that, Pat? Because I was told by PDE that they were not exempt. They were, I was told by the Secretary of Education as recently as Friday that they were included. I just want, I just don't want to make a mistake.
It was in, it was in the PSBA.
That all charter schools were exempt?
Mm-hmm.
Is that in the one that came?
It was the one that came prior to this, this last one.
My understanding was that the, that the Pennsylvania Department of Education received a reprimand from the United States Department of Education saying that there would not be any exemptions.
Yeah.
Oh, well, maybe they have to do it now, but the law that was, the rights that were passed for July 1st, first of all, they fast-tracked it. The auditor, I guess, could not look over it. Oh, no, the Attorney General couldn't look over it. And then that independent board could not look over it. And they just, you know, put that right in order. But that's who I read about, the teachers at charter schools were exempt. Now, you're saying the federal government has denied them?
I, it's my understanding that charter schools were included in that.
Yes.
Okay, well, look at that. I can bring, I can give you that. I can, I can call you and tell you what, which, it was, when was the last, the one that we just got, was the prior one? I read it.
Okay. Well...
There was a meeting, I was at a meeting in Parkland last Thursday, I think. And Secretary Hardman was there. And charter schools was a big part of the discussion. And that issue came up. And I'm positive that he stated that the exemption did not exist.
Right. He said that on Friday as well, needing a BCIU. Well, maybe, like you say, maybe that was their original intention and they were told, no, you can't get away with that. And maybe now it's reversed.
Maybe it's some clarification.
Yeah.
Any other items to be discussed? Are you now all entertaining a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Adjourned.